It's the Great Dane, Kershaw County. Mr. Danny, are we up on the net? Facebook is working great. We were called to order. We have a quorum of all members present. And we have our staff here. And it's an all-American county being tried like none of us have ever seen it tried before. And today, we're going to meet on further things that we need to do on our own behalf. We're in an e-meeting format, so those should be up on Facebook. And we're enacting the mask ordinance that was passed by the city of Camden. And we, within the city of Camden, even though we're a county office, are maintaining compliance with the mask ordinance in the town of Camden today, as you see. We're also, if those of you can't see, we're six feet apart and maintaining social distance and providing liberally washing of hands and other things to make it as sanitary as we can. So we are now called to order, and I ask now Mr. Connell to lead us in invocation and a pledge of allegiance. Would you all please stand?
Let's pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we're thankful for many blessings. We pray that thou bless the family of Dave McIntosh and Anita Gardner and all others who struggle or need thy assistance as they mourn. We pray for humility and charity as we try to make decisions related to Kershaw County. We pray for each and every family in this area, that they might be strong and that the way may be prepared before them to find success according to thy will. We ask forgiveness of sin and the ability to forgive one another and forsake the things we've done wrong. And we also ask that we can have an extra measure of kindness in our daily activities. I say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
To the Father, who has created us, to the Republic, for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Connell. Those words were on my heart, and I thank you. You expressed it better than I could have done it in any other situation. As I said, we now move to our next item, which is public comments. And under our e-meeting format, we allow for comments to come in in advance through Mary. Mary, I have one here from Ms. Deborah King. Is this the only one we have? All right, and then we'll go to those people that wish to speak in person. And under our rules, just explain everything. I'm going to summarize what is an otherwise long letter, but I will try to hit the key points from Deborah King. And then I'll ask Mr. Carpenter to put somebody to answer to her directly, so that she gets her answers. And so, reading from that and quoting, "Please answer these questions. Do you have a stockpile of protective equipment and other gear?" And she lists a number of people that should have this stockpile and access to it. Item number two, "Do you have a test 90% accurate, which gives results in minutes rather than days? And who does contact tracing while people wait for the test results?" Item number three, "Do you want business, which has weathered this so far, to remain open? Or do you want more businesses to close and have to move out of empty buildings and houses?" Item number four, "Do you want schools to open, or do you want a new generation of under-education in South Carolina?" And number five, "Do you want stability, security, and confidence in Kershaw County population before the next round of flu arrives?" And that's a very good point. This is just Kershaw County's first round, and we need to plan for long-term solutions, please. And then I'll read in full her closing sentence or two here. "Requiring masks in public spaces with social conditioning protocols and ticketing for challengers is the easiest, safest solution. People will do it when you require them to do it. Think of the seven generations which will follow you from this day forward." Thanks. And she signs it, Deborah King. I'll get Mr. Carpenter to handle it. Any others, Mary? Mr. DeBeau, does anybody sign up to talk tonight?
Mr. Chairman, one person signed up. The person is Paul Watts.
Mr. Watts? Yeah, Paul, would you come forward? And as you do, I want to just stipulate our rules for this. This is not a time for council to answer you. It's a time for council to hear from you. Please keep your comments in five minutes or less. And also, Mr. Watts, kindly keep them in the decorum of this body and polite and straightforward, sir. Mr. Watts, please, go ahead.
Yes, sir. You have your time, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. I'm before council tonight to request a ban on certain loud-
Can we put the microphone closer, so everybody on Facebook can hear you?
I'm here to request a ban on certain loud fireworks. I'm not requesting a ban on all fireworks. I mean, all forest sparklers, roman candles, that kind of thing. I shot fireworks when I was a kid, and I loved them. But it seems to me that a few years ago, a new kind of firework showed up, and they are much louder than anything I've heard in the past. And I'm sure most of you have probably heard them, at least from a distance. I don't know how many of you have heard them up close. They are shockingly, disturbingly loud. They're louder than any gun that I've ever heard. Now, I live in a pretty well insulated house with double pane windows. We run noise makers and fans during, you know, Fourth of July, that kind of thing, New Year's Eve. And even with that, I can hear these fireworks loud and clear two, three, four streets over. And I've heard them at 1:00 a.m., 4:00 a.m., 6:00 a.m. on Sunday morning, 6:00 p.m. during dinner, must be any other time of day you can imagine. And it's almost year-round. We know for a fact that every year, thousands of pets run away because of fireworks, never to return. We know that they're very disturbing, upsetting to many of our vets returning from wars. And we know for a fact that they are upsetting to many of us who suffer anxiety. I personally know someone who suffers from severe sleep disorders and has sought professional help for it. This person confided to me just the other day, he was literally concerned about having a nervous breakdown because of these things. And we have dealt with these things for many years now. And I think the time has come to ban these loudest ones. I don't know the name of them. I call them mortar shells. That's what they sound like. So, we, you know, and I know friends in certain other areas of the state, and none of them had this issue. They don't have to deal with it, and they can't fathom dealing with it. Now, I, along with my neighbors, have put a great deal of work and time into our homes, our yards, money. I have a quality of life here. And I have many elderly neighbors too. And I know that they suffer too. They won't say anything because they figure it's legal. They will not complain. They just suffer. So I'm speaking on their behalf as well. So how can I imagine living the rest of my days here in Kershaw County, which I plan to do, and dealing with this every year, every year? It's not just on July 4th. It's not just New Year's Eve. So I think it's time to do the right thing and get rid of these things. Nothing will be lost by getting rid of these loudest, obnoxious ones, these menaces we've been dealing with. And we need to get back to where all of us look forward to the holidays, without them being literally destroyed by having to worry about these things. And it's time to, again, think of our neighbors and do the right thing and do unto others. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Do we have your address and phone number?
Yes, sir.
And that's recorded as where?
We have his address and phone number right here, Mr. Chairman.
And where is it?
Recorded here.
Where in the town?
He lives on Pine Road, Pine Ridge Road.
Out in the Melbourne Hill Church section there.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Okay. With that, public comments. Any further, Mr. DeBeau's?
That's it. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. That concludes public comments. We move to adoption of the agenda. It's on the board, thanks to Mr. Templar, and you should have a copy with you on your tablet. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Now, Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bozard. Discussion. Seeing there is none, we move to a vote. All those in favor, so signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous and approved, Mary unanimously. We move to approval of minutes for a call meeting at tab A, also on page three in your tablet. Can we motion to approve, please?
Make a motion that we approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Now, Mr. Gardner, a discussion. I will say that there was some discussion about the six versus three-year term for Health Services District. That's now been resolved, and it was tabled. And you will see that it's a carryover item as tab F in our agenda for today. We move on now to a vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and we move to a proclamation. A proclamation in memory of David McIntosh, a friend of everybody in this room and properly within the sound of my voice. And I think we have W P U B here today. Who is that? I can't see with the face masks. There they are.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming. And I will tell you, Mary tells me that Mary McIntosh and Carrie McIntosh are listening at this moment. And gentlemen, if you would like, after I read the proclamation and we get this thing on the table, that you may want to say something. And I'll read the proclamation in Kershaw County Council in remembrance of Dave McIntosh. Whereas Dave earned a master's degree in journalism from the University of South Carolina and came to work at W P U B in 1986. And whereas he went after every story with everything he had, was not afraid to ask anyone anything, and took great pride in reporting stories right down in the middle based on the love of Kershaw County. He always got the story straight and on time and with a conviction that endeared him to everyone. Whereas Dave was old-school as a reporter. He always had a cup of coffee in his hand, and it did not matter if it was fresh. He would just nuke it if not. He loved the air museum, history, and the British history in particular. He loved covering local elections, even if he complained about it the next day. He also loved the workings of politics, but above all else, he loved completely his wife, Mary, and their daughter Carrie. Whereas Dave mentored several high school and college students through internships at the radio station and worked to err in the respect of Kershaw County leaders and newsmakers. And whereas for all who knew Dave, we are sure that he is now broadcasting the news of heaven, and that brings comfort to us all indeed. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that Kershaw County Council recognizes and honors Mr. Dave McIntosh for his many years of service to Kershaw County and to its citizens, which has brought great honor to him, his family, and this community. And with that, I take a motion to approve.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. A second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gardner. Discussion, and remember, the family's listening. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of County Council. I don't normally make motions or seconds. I usually get into the discussion, but on this one, it was very important to me to, I just wanted to make the motion. And I'd like to share with this family who are listening and those who are here. Back in, was it 1989, Hugo came through. Dave and I spent the entire night at the courthouse. And walking up the stairs or through the back stairs of courthouse, I'll never forget, Dave said, "Jimmy, come here real quick." And I ran over there, and water was coming through the walls. Well, right before that, prior to that, we had gotten in a car to go exploring, my car. And we go shooting across the river bridge, and it's like a firework show. We see all these big explosions. Well, come to find out, it was transformers that were blowing up. But I must say that throughout the years, Dave was a professional first when he came to the news. He was a professional. And he hit it straight with me. He didn't mind mixing words with me in a minute. And, but yet, Dave was also a man who was compassionate and a man who loved his family. And I knew this because I've known Dave all these years. And Dave also loved airplanes. I never saw him smile. I asked him one time, I said, "David, why are you smiling so much at this airshow?" I mean, he was like a kid in a candy shop. And some of you who know him probably have seen that side. I said, "You never smiled that way around me." But he's going to be missed. He is missed. And they've got another angel at the table tonight with Dave McIntosh. He was a good man. Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Bozard?
Dave asked me to go to Columbia with him one afternoon. He knew I had an interest in B-25.
Hell, yeah.
I worked on them for a number of years in the Air Force when I first went in. He said they were rebuilding one over there, and he wanted me to go look at it with him. So I went and looked at him. Well, he wasn't just one of the guys over there. He was one of the leaders. He went out and helped get a lot of the parts that they needed to rebuild that aircraft with. And the last time I talked with him, they had just about everything they needed to rebuild. And it's sitting over at Owens Field in Columbia at one of the hangars they have over there. I went over there several times with him to meetings and so forth, and both of us shared an interest in that B-25. Him because they were rebuilding it, and myself because I spent quite a few years on it when I first came in the Air Force. But like has been said, whatever Dave went at, I saw him dedicated to that D-25, and I got to believe that everything he went at through life, he went at it wholeheartedly as he did that B-25. Thanks, sir.
Indeed. Other comments? The B-25 was, oh, yeah, please, Mr. Tucker, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Mary and Carrie, I just want to say that I think what's been said already about your husband and father is spot-on, but I also want to leave you with how much he truly loves you. Carrie, me being your driving instructor many, many years ago, had an opportunity to spend time with you and get to know your mom and many of years with your dad through many different events and things that we've done together. But one thing he would always do is when I see him, before he gets into the politics and aviation and all those things, is give me an update on your schooling and how you were doing overseas and things. And he talked about you as well, Ms. Mary, on how much he loves you guys. So do know that every day that he woke up, he had a reason to wake up, and it was for the two lovely, beautiful ladies in his life. Y'all carry on. God bless.
Yeah. Mr. Connell?
I just wanted to speak to his mentorship. I'm sure he mentored those that worked at the radio station very well, whether they're in high school or college. But there's a whole nother group of young people that Dave was a mentor to, including myself, for about four years, going through high school with athletics. He didn't necessarily report on athletics all the time, but as you do at any type of news or radio station, you know what's going on generally. And I can recall so many times where he would encourage those that were working hard in the community or at the local high schools to be better, do better, and say congratulations. And that meant a lot when you're a kid. So I'll always be grateful for that.
Thank you, Ben. Others? I will say in closing, thank you, gentlemen, all of you. Respect, this is a great loss for our county and for the family, for Mary and Carrie. But yeah, he was hard on me. He made me go out and see what he regarded as an Air Force B-25. And I reminded him that I would go, and when we got there, I think I ruined his day because I told him the B-25 was commissioned and built by... Lake, Lake Murray or something, right? I don't remember.
Lake Greenwood.
And it was a part of that whole effort that won World War II. It's just a wonderful item, and I think it's at Owens Field now. And with that, I think we would be here all night telling stories about that wonderful man. Suffice it to say, we have W P U B here tonight. Thank you for coming, and thank you, family, for allowing us this honor to, we will truly miss Dave McIntosh.
Amen.
With that, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, so signify, and it's unanimous. Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. And Mary will have to arrange, maybe W P U B can help us arrange for a presentation to the family at appropriate time. It's awfully hard during these COVID days, and maybe certain members of the council would want to be there as well. Maybe we can do it at the station or wherever you say. With that, I think we move on to the next item, which is a public presentation. Thank you again for the radio station for coming. Thank you very much. And we turn to Mr. Carpenter for a COVID update, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you and also up on the screen information related to kind of where we are with the COVID issue. I've decided to, because we're now into months, we're not into days and weeks, we're into months now. And so, it's so much data that I'm starting to show you. Now you see the first four months of the situation and what's happened in the month of June. Obviously, a significant spike that we're all aware of has happened, and that's very visible to you, right there, the number of cases that were confirmed in the county is triple in June what it was in May, what it was in March as well. When you look at the 14 days, generally, DEHAC has started giving us how many cases in the last 14 days, and that's generally going to be the incubation period of the disease. So again, you can see where we started, then we kind of went down. Things were closed. People weren't in contact with each other, and we kind of had that nice little valley there. Then I won't say it's because we started opening up, but it is coincidental that it coincides with opening up our community and our economy, that the cases went up significantly. And so you see where we are there at the end, you know, the last, each one of those is a day. So the last two weeks have been especially hard in the state and the county as well for the cases. When you look at how that's affecting our hospital and the usage and the resources in the state right now, right now, our statewide hospitals are able to manage the ICU beds for this, but the prediction shows that at the rate that ICU usage is going, that at some point in October, we will probably run out of beds in ICU if nothing changes. When you look at Kershaw County and see how our ICU is happening, it's a little different picture than statewide. We're not at the bottom, but we're currently able to manage what we have. I think that shows we have five ICU beds currently occupied. Not all of those are COVID patients. That's important to realize, that we talk about a hospital bed occupancy, we're just talking beds, period. We're not talking how many of those are COVID patients or not, because the hospital bed doesn't care. If you're sick and you're in a bed, you're in a bed. And that's one less bed for the next person coming in the door. So right now, we're able to manage locally our ICU beds, but that's not to say that tomorrow you're not going to have all of them filled. It's just ICU. It is what it is. But of the COVID patients that are in there, I believe four of those, Dan, do you remember? Okay. I don't remember. Of that five, a number of those are COVID patients. And then kind of in, you know, where does that show us? Well, again, there'd be going up and down the hospitalized patients in Kershaw County, and you see how it's, it's at about, you know, the higher levels that we've been all season. And then I guess finally, from there...
The number shows nine on the right-hand side here.
Yes, sir.
Nine in the hospital.
Right. But they're not in ICU.
That's right.
Yes. So if you want to see the summary total by zip code, by date, so this shows you from the beginning how many of our confirmed cases in this county are broken down by the zip code itself. And of course, our three main zip codes do show a significant percentage of them. Some zip codes are much, much lower. Obviously, they have a lot fewer people living in them, but our urbanized areas, which are the dark blue, are also the, or the dark blue ones, which are the heaviest, are also urbanized areas. And then...
Just read off the major zip codes, say Elgin, Bethune, Camden. Not to say the other ones are not important, but just give us the metropolitan area zip codes and the numbers of cases.
That'd be 29020, 29045, 29078. Those are the three main zip codes that account for significant percentage of the cases in this county.
And so, read off the number of cases for those watching on Facebook, for those three zip codes, if you would.
I'd actually have to look at the map then. I don't have that actually in front of me. So there we go. Okay. You can, if you can move it just a little bit over, Danny, so I can see the, there we go. All right. So Camden, 29020, has had 338 cases that are confirmed. DEHAC estimates that there have been a total of 2,000 people that have been exposed to it from the beginning. That's the estimated cases. Get down to Lugoff, 29078. Actually, we'll do Elgin next, 29045, 300 cases confirmed. Possibility of 1,800 that are also been out there that were not captured or caught with the disease. And then moving down to Elgin, 29078, has had 169 cases. Lugoff. Lugoff, I'm sorry. 169 cases with an estimated of 1,035 total.
Thank you. Is that satisfying? Okay, go ahead, Vic, just illustrating it.
Then moving on, that just kind of shows you in a summary for the state of South Carolina what's happened the last, well, last four weeks. It gives you a very kind of sobering of the increase in cases, increase in testing cases, the percentage of positive, how many went to the hospital, and then how many deaths have occurred. Now, moving back locally, Kershaw County maintains a, we have been building up a stockpile. It is not a stockpile that would ever be able to handle all the needs of the county. It's not a stockpile that can handle the needs of the hospital, but it is first and foremost a stockpile that would handle the county's needs, EMS, public safety, firemen, law enforcement, those individuals that are working on the county's behalf, and then being able to help outside organizations in a pinch. If they got into crisis, we could have some to help them as well. So we are maintaining a stockpile such as that. And then in closing, wanted to just kind of give, we were told that we would come back to council in July with a update and a final report on the Small Business Stabilization Grant Program that the chamber was contracted with. And should there be any questions, Amy's here, but hopefully I'll be able to give you all good, good information. And you have in front of you a lot of the information on it, but, you know, essentially, they distributed $810,000 to 256 Kershaw County businesses. The average check amount was $3,164, and they began accepting applications on April 24th and went all the way through June 1st. Total of $2,165,000 was requested from this committee. Again, they were able to allocate $810,000 toward those needs. Priority was given to applicants based on the following: businesses who are still in operation, businesses who were shut down by the governor, businesses with revenue decreases by 20% or more, businesses that were the most vulnerable is defined by those with a demonstrable lack of capital resulting from the impact of the COVID-19. Round one, applications were submitted between April 24th and May 4th. The committee distributed 93 checks totaling $257,465 in round one. Round two, the applications that were submitted were between May 4th, 2020, and May 18th, 2020. Committee planned to distribute $225,000 plus any funds left over from the previous round, which was $42,535. Round two, they distributed 76 checks totaling $251,000. Round three, the applications were collected between May 18th and June 1st, and they were considered. They planned to distribute $225,000 plus any leftover funds from the previous rounds. They distributed 73 checks totaling $232,235 in round three. County council then met on June 4th and provided an additional $60,000 as added to the grant. These additional funds were used to support another 14 applicants totaling $46,000. You have also in front of you a listing of all of the entities that were awarded grants. It is about six pages in length, and it's got each one named. It shows down the amount that they're awarded. Obviously, it's too many to read off to you, but it is provided to you so you can go through and you can see. and you can see. The feedback that I've received has been uniformly appreciative, thankful, and grateful. The business owners that have reached out to me have indicated that just the knowledge that the county cared about them and that the county wanted to do what it could to support them in this time was hugely important to them. The dollar amounts in the big picture may not have been huge. The average gift or the largest gift, I think, was, or grant was $3,500. The $3,500 was a lifeline to some that kept them going, and it was a light in the dark that they needed desperately at that point in their businesses' lives. I've got copies of those that I will put in council boxes, the letters I've received from them. I think it's very heartwarming to read and to know and understand what was said by those business people and the impact that the council had in making those decisions. That, Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
All right, let's, I'm sure there'll be a bunch of questions, but first of all, let me recognize Amy Conard, who, along with the work group, Mr. Conell, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Snodgrass, and with the support of Mr. Jones, Mr. Bozard, and Mr. Gardner, made that happen. Gentlemen, ma'am, thank you for your help, and Mr. Carpenter and your expert administration of this. With that, let's open to questions and comments, please, starting with Mr. Bozard.
Mr. Carpenter, on page four there, is that a typo down there? I'm trying to wonder how this man got up the Highway 21, Danny, Danah County. Is that supposed to be 521?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Other comments? Uh, Mr. Gardner, I'm sorry.
I just want to commend staff, Amy, chamber, committee. This is no small undertaking, let me tell you. When you start looking at the list and, you know, you got to think about every one of these, there's an application, and all the time and effort that went in to putting this together and, you know, diluting those funds down to where you try to do what you can for these people. Great job, great job. Thank you.
Yep, other comments? Uh, Mr. Tucker.
Yes, ditto to what has already been said. Thank you, Ms. Amy, you and that committee. And I would just like to call those names one more time because they have been great people, and I hope I don't screw this up by saying, Reverend John Lee, the, Mr., help me out.
Greg Newman.
Greg Newman, there we go.
Lauren Birch.
Lauren Birch. Pam Delk, Margaret Lawhorn.
There you go.
John Lee, Greg Newman, and then of course, Amy Conard.
So thank you to all of you and your time spent on this. Thank you, Mr. Boz, for looking over this. I know I've been in your office a lot aggravating you, but it was, it was worth it. And I want to thank Ben and David as well, my colleagues, for being the type of teammates that always have something to offer and contribute but never hold up process because of not exactly agreeing 100%. And so I thank you for those type of team spirit attitudes and working conditions. I also want to say that I got sent to me a awesome article from the Sumptha Item. So if you hadn't had a chance, last week, I think it came out, Ms. Amy, you didn't see it, where the Sumptha Item done a article on the program here in Kershaw County. And it was quoted very well, and it talked about, and they got these, this information from the business folks that we helped out. So if you have a chance, I'll try to find it on my phone. Please go to the Sumptha Item, because they did a write-up on our program that we administered here in Kershaw County. Thank you.
Other comments? Jimmy, Mr. Jones.
You know, we sit up here and we talk about what we did. Well, we weren't saying that, I don't mean that ugly. I mean, I think I came up with an idea, Sammy grabbed and ran with it, the chairman jumped on it, formed a committee, everybody worked together to make this happen, and it was absolutely the right thing to do. But I'm gonna tell you something that I'm a firm believer in, we are, we are very lucky, very fortunate to have Amy Conard. She puts up with me, she puts up with this council, I mean, she puts up with her board, and she went back and she was like a firecracker. I mean, she was wide open, and she hit it hard, despite Jimmy Jones. Amy, thank you.
That's what we say too, Jimmy.
And I appreciate you so much, I just want you to know that. This, this is heartfelt, because we, you and I both talked to these businesses, and some were nice, some were not, but I can tell you one thing, this came at the right time for the people of Kershaw County. This council did the right thing for the people of Kershaw County. And Amy Conard, you're a queen. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Amen.
Other comments? Uh, Mr. Gardner.
And also, let's not forget Mr. Carpenter and dealing with our nonprofits, because we had money that went there as well, so, thank you, Mr. Carpenter, good job.
Other comments? Uh, sir? I will throw out another matter, getting back to COVID. The school board's meeting tonight, North Carolina today announced their plan to open schools, and everything that we do in here, in the city of Camden, and Bethune, and Elgin does, has got to be taken in the context that a major movement is going to occur in either August or September, when the school board decides and how they decide to bring back our children, 10,000 children. And the teachers and the staff, and likewise, the families who are going to be impacted by this is well over half our county. So whatever we do on COVID is now impacted and vice versa by what the school board does tonight. Let's all pay attention, and gives us cause for continuously evaluating the effectiveness of what we ask our people to do here from within the policy realm of the county council.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jones.
Just like, I did not intend, I just forgot that Mr. Carpenter was involved. His mask is so big, it's like a pillow on his face. Also, Russell Browzel's got a big old pillow on his face, but listen, you did a great job. Your staff did a great job, and it affected a lot of lives in Kershaw County. Thank you so much.
Other comments? All right, very good. I think we move on to the next item, and Mr. Carpenter, and Danny, and EMS, thank you for that hard work that gives us a clear picture of where we are in the county. We move now, very appropriately, to a resolution encouraging individuals to wear face mask coverings in certain circumstances and matters related there too. I'm going to read this, it's at Tab C, it's also on the screen, and it's on page eight and nine on your tablet. And I'll read portions of it in part, and then I'll conclude with the last three paragraphs in full. Whereas on 13 March, the governor issued an executive order, extended and now in effect for the novel coronavirus, and declared a state of emergency. And whereas on 30 June, Kershaw County extended and declared a public state of emergency. And whereas the number of COVID cases continues to grow in the state, and as reported by DEHAC, and causes them to warn of the risk of localized person-to-person spread creating an extreme public health risk. And whereas the number of cases is growing rapidly, and if it continues to spread in this county, the number of persons relying on medical, pharmaceutical, and general cleaning supplies will increase, the private and public sector workforce will be negatively impacted by absenteeism, and the demand for medical facilities may exceed locally available resources. And whereas, as of 8 July, there were 48,909 confirmed cases in the state, with Kershaw County having 807 and 17 confirmed and unconfirmed deaths, a matter of discussion, but as high as 17. Whereas the county council finds it vitally important that individuals work together to decrease the widespread proliferation of COVID-19 among the citizens. Whereas the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, and DEHAC advise and encourage the use of face coverings to slow the spread. And whereas, Kershaw County School District will impose additional hygiene and sanitation measures in accordance with the Department of Health and Environmental Control and the South Carolina Department of Education requirements for the operation of schools, buses, and the regulation of student activities. And whereas, taking measures to control outbreaks minimize the risk to the public, maintains the health and safety of the county residents, and limits the spread of infection in our communities and within the healthcare delivery system. And now reading in full, whereas in order to protect, preserve, and promote the general health, safety, and welfare, and the peace and order of the community, the county is taking steps to try to prevent the citizens and employees from increased risk of exposure. And whereas, in light of the foregoing, county council deems it proper and necessary to adopt this resolution in order to encourage, A, patrons of grocery stores and pharmacies to wear face coverings while inside the store in light of these, the fact that these establishments sell essential goods and services such that individuals do not have a meaningful choice to decide not to shop there, B, all employees and patrons of county-owned facilities where social distancing is not possible, to wear face coverings, and C, the citizens of Kershaw County to follow the CDC and prevention and governor's guidance for face masks and social distancing. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of the county of Kershaw, South Carolina, in a meeting duly assembled, that due to the real and present concern for the spread of the virus, and with full faith in the goodwill and public spirit of all Kershaw County citizens, that the council supports the guidance of the CDC and prevention, and stands with the governor and public health officials to encourage face coverings for widespread use throughout Kershaw County, in keeping with state guidelines, and particularly as follows: large gatherings where social distancing cannot be maintained, especially in places of periodic necessity, such as medical, pharmaceutical, and food businesses, by employees and help staff in retail and restaurant enterprises, and by county patrons and employees where social distancing is not, excuse me, not possible. Moreover, the wearing of face masks is further encouraged universally in all, and in all places and all times where common sense and good manners indicate preventative measures will reduce the risk of oneself or to fellow citizens. This resolution shall become effective, and so on. With that, can we have a motion to approve?
A move.
Uh, Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Tucker, I think, or Mr. Snodgrass, thank you, David. And so with that, we move to discussion, beginning with Mr. Gardner, who has honors on this, please, sir.
Well, this is, the standpoint of wearing a face mask obviously is a personal decision for people. I think statistics, as far as I'm concerned, say that it helps, and I think you can see that the statistics from when we open things back up and the numbers start to rise the way they do, and people argue that there's more tests and more positives, and certainly that is one of the reasons, but I think the reason, the big reason, is that when we open things back up and people were ignoring the mask, I think you see what the results are, and we see that we've gone from a 14-day total of 27 up to 228 or something like that. So, you know, it's increased 100 times or 200 times what it was. To me, wearing one, of course, you know, I've talked to a lot of people who've come in my shop and before the ordinance, with a mask, without a mask, and a lot of people say, you know, I'm not going to wear one, it doesn't do any good. And of course, with an immune-deficient system like I have, you know, I just tell them that, you know, it's a matter of whether you want to protect your family, because if you go out and get it and you take it back to your children, your family, your mother, your grandmother, you want to be the one to take it back. And I just think a mask really will prevent some of that. I don't think it's, I don't think it's wholeheartedly 100% that you won't get it, but I think it certainly eliminates some of the percentage of getting it. So I am very much in favor of this ordinance, or in this resolution. Would be in favor of an ordinance if we get that far, but I think that people should use some common sense, and I think they should adhere to wearing a mask. And again, that's personal opinion, which everybody has, but that's mine. Thank you.
Mr. Snodgrass?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of council, you know, as I think about this, I regret that we find ourselves as a country, we find ourselves in a place where we're, we're struggling to find common ground to be able to rise above the current pandemic. And so before tonight, it's a resolution that identifies what we know about COVID-19, and then it also agrees with our state, our state health officials, that wearing of a mask is a wise, personal choice, preventing the spread of the disease. But also, the heart of the matter is a matter of personal liberty and freedom. You know, at the core of this great experiment, this great experimental republic that we call the United States of America, at the core of it is liberty. In fact, one of the first flags of our great state bore that, bore that name, liberty. Many have sacrificed so much for our liberty, and we shouldn't take it lightly. So here we are at the intersection of liberty and safety, and the truth is that these words don't always share the same coin. We have some in our country who are asking that for the safety and the well-being of us all, to please pass an ordinance. We have some who are asking for the sake of liberty to allow them to make their own choices in regards to keeping me and my fam, or them and their family safe. We know that a full ordinance may not be enforceable on a practical level. While other counties have passed such an ordinance, we know that municipalities are in a much better position to enact, or to enact enforcement than a county is. And so for this reason, I couldn't support an ordinance, but I can support a resolution. A resolution that signals to our citizens that we do indeed have an issue, but that we can control it, and that we agree with our state officials that our best tool right now is to wear a mask or a face covering when going out in public. So I'm urging my family, my fellow council members to join me in passing this resolution that encourages our citizens to use their individual liberty to wear a mask when going out in public, and also when social distancing isn't possible. And I recognize, I recognize there are questions concerning a face mask or face covering, being able to stop a microscopic viral particles, but we know that the virus, the virus has to live within droplets and then transmit from one airway into another airway. And if this is the case, then science is clear that a type of, a type of face covering then greatly reduces the droplets that leaves a person's mouth or airway. And so when I encourage folks to wear a mask, do I believe the sky is falling? No, the sky is not falling. We will get through this, and I believe that despite our recent spike in new cases, we're seeing some glimmers of hope. Mr. Carpenter shared with us some stats, but there's also stats that we know that 88% of our cases in our state did not require hospitalization. I think that's, that's worth sharing. We know that the current recovery rate in our state is 92%. So, and I'll be honest, I'll admit, I was, I was late to the game in the mask thing, but as I begin to, as I begin to look at it, I begin to realize choosing to wear a mask isn't about the sky falling, but it is about my fellow man. And so I'm urging us as, to use our individual liberty for someone else. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boz, I saw you had your hand up, sir.
Yes, thank you very much. I received a call yesterday afternoon from a man working in Columbia, lives in my district. He had gotten the word that we were passing an ordinance like Camden did, and I assured him that was not the case. We are not passing an ordinance to wear a face mask. This is only a recommendation by his board. And I assured him again that if it came about to an ordinance, I would not support it, and that's where I stand. But I do, will support this tonight, but I will not go any further than this. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Other comments? Mr. Jones, Mr. Conell, Mr. Tucker? All right, I see that.
I was telling Sammy to go ahead.
I think we had a, we had a draw here, but I don't mind going.
Okay, guys, I'm a staring con.
Go ahead, now flip a coin, let's go.
I don't mind going.
Go ahead, Mr. Tucker, I recognize you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Very good points made up here this evening. I'm definitely in favor of this mask resolution tonight, and let me take it a little step further. The numbers remain the same or continue to go up, I will be in favor for an ordinance. Let me just give you some parallels to what's going on in this world today compared to in our history, and it just makes common sense. In World War I, we lost less than 100 and In World War I, we lost less than 135,000. When I woke up this morning, that was the number for the United States. No one's saying anything about that. Boeing lost less than 400 people and they grounded them for 18 months before they got it right, before they can put those planes back in the air. We're not telling you that you can't have your liberties and freedoms. What we're telling you, let's live, let's survive, let's not infect the ones that may not be able to overcome this virus. I have two 80-year-old parents. I deal with a lot of old people. I deal with a lot of people with underlying conditions. I work every day with young people. They can carry the virus. Prime example, Keisha Lane Bottoms, that's the mayor of Atlanta for the ones that don't know her. Child brought it to her asymptomatic, gave it to her husband, she's asymptomatic. I mean, gave it to her, she's asymptomatic. Her husband had it and he is having a rough time right now trying to recover. Everybody can't be asymptomatic and everybody's not going to survive this. So let's at least have the human decency to take care of one another until we can get better measurements on controlling this virus. None of us put it here, none of us want it here. But I'm telling you people, it is killing people. That's not a secret. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, you made, or Mr. Conell? Go ahead, Ben.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Few questions and a couple of comments. Is the anticipated expiration of, really this is an opinion, is a resolution, would end with the end of the state of emergency issued by the county? I don't really know who I'm asking. Usually we'd have a name on here that would say who put it on the agenda. I'm just kind of wondering who, what intent is.
I think it reads, "All orders, resolutions, and parts therefore to the extent of the conflict hereby repealed." Effective immediately, it doesn't have an end date.
I'm just wondering, is it the intent that it'd be concurrent?
Well, what do you think? Ken, are we going to need an end date? It's a resolution.
Mr. Chairman, you could put an end date on it, but the, all the findings relate to the CDC's requirements and the DHEC's requirements. So my opinion would be when DHEC no longer recommends social distancing, when the CDC Communical Disease Center no longer recommends social distancing, then of course in the, those are the findings that it's based on. So when they no longer recommend it, then it would not be effective.
And the governor.
And the governor.
That's right.
Yeah, when those three entities no longer recommend face coverings and social distancing, which kind of go hand in hand, then it would no longer be effective.
Is it anticipated that our state of emergency would run concurrent with those three time periods as well?
No, this does not tie into our state of emergency. It ties into our state of emergency, but it also ties into the DHEC and CDC and the governor in all the wherethes. Whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and DHEC advise and encourage the use of face coverings to slow the spread of COVID-19, it goes on and expounds on that, expands on that. So the findings are based on the advisories of CDC, DHEC, and the governor. It also references our state of emergency as part of it, but I think it would not be effective when those matters are not effective anymore because that's what it's predicated on. That's the foundation for it.
Okay, thank you. Overall, I can support the resolution. A few other items I'd just like to mention, one is data points, but also really we obviously are not experts on anything related to mask efficiency or dropletized or aerosolized virus transmission. Google has been a friend to us all, I think, in trying to figure out what's going on and you've got some of your friends who are physicians as well to make heads or tails of, you know, usually I try to, I try to vote based on data points and there's not much data out there, or if you look real hard, you can find studies that go either way. With that said, for, for dropletized transmission of a virus, it seems that masks are useful and that makes some sense if you sneeze or cough and it's going to be out there, it'll stop those droplets, at least the larger ones. For aerosolized, the mask that I have on my face ain't very effective at all, honestly, at least what I, from what I've looked at because of the transmission of air out the sides and out the top and also if it gets wet in a muggy, hot South Carolina, 115% humidity environment, it doesn't really serve its persons that well. Then you got N95 masks and then you got respirators. I guess the point is not all masks are created equal, but on some level, it seems like they can be effective for dropletized virus transmission. A couple of us up here have mentioned freedom and liberty and overall, I think this resolution's trying to say, we all are free, be smart, and protect yourselves. If you feel like you're at risk, make sure you're protected or if you're around someone that might be at risk, try to protect them if at all possible. Speaking to that, the, the data does seem to support the idea that there are at-risk groups. I think there's only four or five in this room that might not satisfy the age requirement and would be less at risk because of age. And then pre-existing medical conditions, including heart disease, kidney disease, lung issues, and others, put you at higher risk. And those are the folks that, that need, I think, all protective measures. You know, I'm wearing a mask tonight because I care about my good friend, Tom Gardner, who has gone through some treatments that compromises immune system. It's just consideration. And then also, I reflected on it and thinking in the gospel, if your brother asks you to go a mile with him, you go with him twain. If he asks for his shirt, you give him your cloak off your back as well. And that just came to my mind also. I mentioned Anita Gardner in the prayer that I had the opportunity to give. She's one of my cousins that just died. She had a lot of issues going on in her life, health-wise, but COVID-19 was one of them and she just passed away and they had to take her off the respirator. So this is quite real. It does impact a lot of people. It won't impact necessarily a lot of us, but it'll probably touch somebody that we love or care about. And for those reasons, I could support the resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good work, sir. Mr. Jones?
He has a question for Ben.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Snodgrass.
I just had a question or comment for Mr. Conell. And of course, I do not at all, I'm not coming off argumentative as well because we're great colleagues and that's not what I'm about. But I just, I agree with you that we, we're not, none of us are virologists, we're not epidemiologists on this, on this, on this table, this council up here. And so I agree with you on that. We do need to, you know, look at some of the data points and look at some of the experts. So that, for me, I take comfort in knowing that someone like Dr. Linda Bell, our state epidemiologist, has, has, has recommended this and, and some other things as well. But, you know, I guess I'm, I guess I'm just dialoguing that I agree with you that we're, we don't need to just rely on our own opinions or, you know, what our cousin shared on Facebook about it, you know, but, but I think we can take comfort in knowing that our state epidemiologist has, has recommended this as well, so.
I would just, and continue the dialogue in a non-argumentative way. I was just going to respond, I guess, that even the experts in many ways don't have a clue, you know? I deal with, I deal with expert witnesses a lot and whenever I'm working with someone in a pharmaceutical drug case or a medical malpractice case or nursing home case or anything like that, a lot of the studies have to continue over a period of, you know, three to five years before they get peer reviewed and they have a large enough pool of participants to determine what the statistics say you can actually rely on. Of course, COVID has only been in our face since last November-ish and moving forward. So, you know, people are trying to run trials and studies and I can only come at it from the legal perspective, but I don't know many expert witnesses right now that could get up and say with any level of confidence anything that could be admitted or used in court. And I know we're not in court today, but that's just the world I live in and kind of how I approach it. So I think there's a lot more work that has to be done before people can really stand up with confidence as they have in the past based on data about what should or shouldn't be done.
I think many would agree. It's definitely a situation where we're playing it by ear, I mean, an educated ear, you know, but definitely a lot of unknowns. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And let me start by saying, Mr. Snodgrass, thank you for calling me and talking to me about this this past week. And let me also begin in a non-argumentative way to say thank you to this county council for doing a resolution tonight and not doing an ordinance. Okay, I had, after speaking with Mr. Snodgrass earlier, you know, I've really been going through this. I pulled a copy of the city's ordinance because it's similar to what the resolution is and, and it made me even more thankful that there's a resolution proposed and not an ordinance because I don't know how, where they're going to enforce this. I was looking at where it had the rule. It said the use of a face mask is required by every person within the boundaries. The city as detailed below, every person must wear a mask, face covering at all times inside any building which is open to the public. And then it said, number two, waiting to enter any building which is open to the public, oh, excuse me, interacting with other persons in or outside public spaces, including but not limited to curbside pickup, delivery, service calls, engaging in business activities in public, commercial, industrial spaces, utilizing public or commercial transportation services. And it kind of goes on and on.
That's, just for the record, that's from Camden?
That was the city ordinance.
That's not ours.
No, sir, but I wanted to make a point here.
I didn't want anybody out there to...
Right, and I made, I thought I made that clear, but thank you for clarifying it. Then I go back on the back and I see C on page four of their ordinance says, "Face coverings are not required when a person is traveling in a private vehicle alone in an enclosed space or able to maintain a minimum distance of six feet from other persons at all times, three outdoors, and able to maintain a minimum distance of six feet from other persons at all times, and four alone, are only with other household members drinking and then drinking, eating, or smoking, where smoking is permitted is an exception. Then another exception is inside a private residence, including thereof complying with the request of law enforcement." Because I'm sure when law enforcement pulls somebody over, they've got to ask and remove the mask so they can see who they are and talk to them. But anyway, I found it interesting that their, their rule was as broad as their exception in the ordinance and I think that makes it hard to enforce. And I think too that the police, it's a civil issue, so the police aren't enforcing it. Code enforcement, I guess, is enforcing it. But anyway, that really just kind of grabbed my interest. And you know, when I was down at the beach, it was, it was amazing that they've got a mask ordinance. I think four, four counties out of 46 have, am I correct, have an ordinance?
There are more now, but it's...
There are more now, sir. Okay, and I think about 50 cities. Am I correct on that, Mr. Gardner? I think somewhere around there.
They've added some more too, yes, sir.
Okay, but anyway, I know this is done with good intention. No question in my mind that each one of you believe in what you're doing and it's done with good intention. That's why I'm going to have to do what I do in good intention. I have, I just, talking about your liberty, when I went to exercise my liberty tonight, I will wear a mask if it's the law. I will wear a mask with Mr. Tom Gardner, who we don't agree on anything. But bottom line is, he asked me to wear a mask for his safety and I'm wearing a mask. He even stated I was very good-looking with his mask on and...
You want me to clarify that?
You can, you want a second?
I did say that he looked better with a mask.
But however, you know, we're in such a serious time, Mr. Chairman, members of county council, I'm glad that we can all sit up here and find a little bit of humor out of such a tragedy that we're in right now and I, and I appreciate that. But as I said, I know everybody's doing what they think is right. Here's where I'm at. My liberty, I, sitting up here, I just don't feel comfortable at all trying to advise a private citizen how to live their private life. We have some smart people in Kershaw County and, and they, they're adults and they can make some decisions for themselves, but because of that, I just, I just can't support this. And, but I am very thankful that y'all did not make this a rule of law, you did make it a resolution, and I think that that's showing this council is trying to work, folks in this community. But thank you so much.
Other comments? I'll close it out and we'll move to a vote.
Can I make one?
Yeah, Mr. Gardner, go ahead.
I have a good friend who's vacationing in Massachusetts. Massachusetts has a statewide ordinance on mask or face covering. He texted me today and you have to wear that in public places, grocery stores, where we go. The fine for non-compliance is $300, which is pretty steep, but that's Massachusetts. I don't think we necessarily want to duplicate what they're doing, but South Carolina is also number three in the world in increased cases. So I think that's something to think about.
Okay, very good. Say another point, Mr. Snodgrass?
If you don't mind. Mr. Jones, I appreciate your comments and I appreciate your heart and all, you know, you're a man that always stands kind of where you believe, not kind of, who absolutely stands where you believe, and I appreciate that. But I would ask, just, I just, before we go to vote, just if you would, if you would reconsider and join us, I would just, I was asking that. But again, not argumentative, I just thank you for your, for your, what you've said and I respect where you're coming from, but I just figured before we go to vote, I would ask.
And I will consider, reconsider as we're sitting here before the hands go up. It's hard, you know, it's, it's hard sometimes when you're up here by yourself and you're voting by yourself because you have a strong belief. And then when your colleague also throws the gospel in there, I feel like, okay, I'm going against the gospel as well. But anyway, I think we see it a couple of different ways, but I thought Ben made some very valid points there and I really appreciate that, you know.
You like prayer, right?
I absolutely do, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jones. I appreciate you.
I'm just telling you, I'm thinking.
Okay, Mr. Conell, one last point and then I'll close it out for a vote.
Just a holistic, overall observation. Everything we do up here impacts people's private lives. I mean, that, that's one of the, the balance of liberty and government, I guess, is every time government does something a little bit more, the idea is in some instances, you have a little bit less liberty. That's why this is just a resolution. I think it's important to understand what we're voting on. It's just a, an expression of opinion and even within the resolution, we all express different ways of interpreting what it actually says. But anyway, as a basis for not voting on it, you know, I think everything that we do up here impacts people's private lives. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Since we're quoting the Bible, if a trumpet sounds and makes an uncertain sound, the people will not follow. I want to make it clear that I am absolutely in support of the resolution and the fact that everyone out of a sense of courtesy and responsibility should do as the Bible calls for and common sense dictates is wear the mask whenever you can and to show your concern for your fellow man and your neighbor. I would also tell you, it has a decisive effect in my business. As you know, I have businesses outside the county and inside the county and 100% of the people I deal with in California, today in Alabama, in Washington DC, and in Detroit are requiring the use of the mask. And 100% of them are having trouble with people who don't exercise common sense and common decency, show up on the assembly line and shut down assembly lines for important stuff that's important for security of the United States for two weeks until they can figure out who did and did not get the virus and millions of dollars are lost. I'll tell you, thirdly, decisions are being made about this county and this state and this country on businesses coming here, and I can, I can attest because I know who they are, because they're not sure we have a workforce that is disciplined and backed up by the community for the wearing of the mask and other precautions that might impact, might impact for those of you that don't believe in the mask, and I'll give you that, I happen to believe in it. And then 100% of the military people that I deal with who are presently in Thailand, Afghanistan, Korea, and I've been on the phone with them the last two days for other reasons, Afghanistan people where they're shooting at you are wearing a mask. So wear the mask, I would ask everybody. I do appreciate the difference of opinion, but the bulk of people that I deal with worldwide are wearing the mask and other considerations that impact what we're trying to do tonight. I see, Mr. Jones, you wanted to make one more comment?
I did, Mr. Chairman. I don't think you meant it the way I took it, but I'm going to challenge you on it anyway. You said there, please care about your fellow man and vote to wear the mask or wear the mask. I care as much about my fellow man as anybody sitting on this county council. I just may not agree with the position certain members of this council take. So if that was the intention, I take issue with it. If it wasn't, you know, so be it, but...
Thank you.
Just because I may not vote the way y'all vote doesn't mean I don't care about people. I wouldn't have this mask on right now if I didn't care about Tom Gardner. I wouldn't have this mask on right now if I didn't care about the rule of law. I'm going to follow that, but I have my beliefs. And I truly was throwing things around in my mind, trying to think, how could I, how could I not? And I will... my mind, trying to think, how could I, how could I not, and I will vote my conscience, and I will vote my belief, but I do care about people of Kershaw County.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. With that, I call for a vote, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, Mrs. Sniggrass, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Burns, Mr. Bozard, and Mr. Conell, those opposed, and that would be Mr. Jones, and the resolution passes. With that, we move to the next item, a series of ordinances, the first item is on page 10 in your, in your tablet, item number one is also at tab D at page 10 on your tablet. With that, Mr. Carpenter, can you open it up for, for business?
Mr. Chairman, Members of Council, you have tonight a first reading and ordinance to amend the code of official zoning map of Kershaw County for approximately one acre of land from its current zoning of RD1 to RD2. This has previously been approved by the Planning Commission on a unanimous vote.
Very good. With that, can we have a motion to approve?
Go ahead.
Mr. Bozard, this is your district, can we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tucker, with that, just a little bit more information, Mr. Carpenter, if you want to bring Mike up, that'd be fine, but was it unanimous with the planning and zoning?
Yes, sir, it was unanimous with the Planning Commission.
Very good, all right, with that, Mr. Bozard.
Yes, Mr. Woods came to me about two months back, we had a long talk one Sunday afternoon, I told him to go see Mr. Michael, which he did, and that's what this is about, he's lives by himself, his wife passed away a number of years back, and he wants to tear the house down and move a mobile home in there, a manufactured home in. His neighbors has come in and sent a letter, you got a letter in your file there from one neighbor, that agrees with the rezoning, nobody disagrees with it, and I think this board needs to approve it. Thank you.
Very good, other comments? Mr. Tucker, sir?
I just want to say to the Wood and Hudson family that I'm sorry about all delays, but we don't control COVID-19, and appreciate your persistence and patience with the county in working through this, and we'll work as fast as we can here on council and hope that all comes out good for you. I will be supporting this tonight.
Other comments? No, it looks, those are, thank you very much, I didn't realize that. With that, we move to a vote, all those in favor on the first reading signify by raising your hand, and Mary, it's unanimous. We move to the second ordinance, item number two on page 27 in the tablet, and it's also at tab E, and on the board, Mr. Carpenter, do your magic here, please.
Mr. Chairman, Members of Council, we have before you tonight for first reading, an amendment to amend the Kershaw County zoning and land development regulations, the ZLDR, that relate to solar power facilities, large-scale in nature. Currently, our current ZLDR puts them in the same category as power generation facilities. The current environment of this country is leading itself more and more to these kinds of facilities, our code did not really support it, so this is an amendment to our code to support these larger-scale solar facilities you see in the country. It passed the Planning Commission unanimously and comes to council on first reading.
Very good, can we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Sniggrass counted first, Mr. Tucker, second, you want to lead off, David, or you prefer?
I would just echo what Mr. Carpenter said, I mean, this is certainly where we're heading, the technology for solar gets, it gets better each year, I mean, 10 years ago wasn't practical, but this year it is, I've got a family member who has solar on their house, and it's just, it's just, it's just where we're heading, and it may be, it may be an opportunity for, for Kershaw County to, I love to see, I would love to see us lead the state in green energy and be in a place where, where they want to come and be a part, you know, and obviously, this, this gives us some parameters in which they can operate in, thank you.
Mr. Tucker?
I have no comments other than a quick question, no opposition opposing this, was it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other, Mr. Ben, please.
Mr. Chairman, yes, thanks. Mr. Carpenter, just wondering what was the motivation for the amendment, was there a individual or business that expressed an interest in this in Kershaw County, or unilaterally, did staff just say, you know, we want to update this?
No, I mean, we, we had been looked at as location for, for facilities, and as part of due diligence, they would look at our, at our ordinances, and it's come to our attention that our ordinances did not support or encourage such facilities to locate here. So, there is nothing currently that is predicated on this passing, but upon passing this, it'll make it more likely that something like that would be able to locate here. Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, sir, this has already started in the county, you're aware of that, right? There's already solar panels going up?
Yes, sir, but this would be for a large, you know, many, many acres of land, not small ones, but...
That's what I'm trying to get you, to you, is tell me, we're not going to talk about residential, when you've got these four, five, six panels up.
Right, this is not cover residential.
Our Fairfield Electric already has one up on Highway 5.
Right, but it would not be one that would have been covered by this ordinance.
Okay, where did we get the 100-foot setback from sides and from the road? I mean, where'd that come from?
I'll defer that to Mr. Conley.
Just on our due diligence, this is an ordinance that a lot of other jurisdictions in the state have used, and what Mr. Carpenter was sort of referencing is, this is a, when the companies are looking towards us, this is actually a comfort for them, for us to have these particular ordinances online for them, the setbacks, the distances, creating a buffer between properties, surrounding properties, not only for the properties that are abutting them, but also for the investment they're making on the property.
Okay, you go down further, I'm a little confused with it, because in one place you're using a 100-foot setback, in another place you're using 20, can't find it, 20-foot? Then you want a 50-foot buffer? I'm a little confused, why we got so many setbacks and stuff in here?
Well, they're different things, so a setback is a distance you can build from a property line, a buffer is, you can put in that setback area, but that is a defined measurement for a buffer area for mostly landscaping.
Did I not read another, there was another, you had a 20-foot in here also?
Yeah, it says 20 feet is required for all other adjacent property lines, including roads and right-of-ways.
What is that for?
That's an additional, if it was outside of that, so the 100 feet is required for all roads and right-of-ways and just in property lines. The buffer is an additional outside of that 50 feet, so the 50 feet is a buffer, it's not a setback.
So you got a setback in addition to that, we got another 50-foot buffer, so we got 150-foot?
No, you can do the buffer inside of your setback.
Okay, your 50-foot's inside your 100-foot?
Correct.
Buffer is like planting trees and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I'm well aware what a buffer is, I just want to make sure what we're saying in this. Just one second, give me one second, I'm trying to find one other here that I read in here, I should have marked these, and I didn't. What I'm trying to make sure of, that we're not handicapping somebody and have to come back in here and change this thing later.
Mr. Bozard, I'd also suggest that we can work with you in the next time before second reading as well, if there's any questions.
Yeah, we have a second, third reading yet to go, we could bring that in.
All right, I'll, I'll look down and get all my facts.
Let me just address one point before Mr. Jones goes, now there is a procedure for variances as well as a part of the application process, is that correct? If the variance would come into the planning and zoning, or would it come into us or be approved?
No, sir, I mean, they can, if they don't agree with the ordinance that we have at hand, they can apply for a variance, which would, would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to leave them from the standards in which we, we place in our ordinance.
Yeah, and the second point is, this one is a widespread ordinance from other counties in the state, and it's already been kind of murder-boarded by the electric companies in other counties, so...
Yeah, again, this is just really, and going back to Mr. Carpenter's point, this is really just to the large-scale, several hundred-acre solar farms that are coming fairly popular around the United States. It doesn't at all address residential, so those are still handed as accessory uses. Mr. Bozard, you mentioned Fairfield Electric, all those can still go into their, their substation areas, that they're, they're, they're required federally mandated to put green energy in, so some of the, some of the other power companies are also putting in solar panels as well, and that doesn't address that as well, they can still put those in their substations that they're allowed to do. This is just different, just for those large, several hundred-acre solar farms that are coming.
Mr. Chairman?
Right, I think, Mr. Jones, you, you...
Oh, you, Mr. Conley, yes.
Okay, Ben, go ahead.
I was just going to say, an analogy popped to mind that might be useful, Land Jam was that concert that was considering coming and occurring at the River Park, but in Kershaw County, we didn't have an application process or anything that was provided in the code that would allow for an event that large, we just didn't even have an application that someone could submit, so I hope our, our legal counsel and staff are still working on how we can accommodate...
Oh, is that right?
...large events that want to be in Kershaw, that's why they had to look at another location primarily, at the Carolina Cup, which it's scheduled for, we'll see how that goes next month, but I think this is analogous in that there are some large opportunities in the world which Kershaw County can't accommodate based on the laws that we have on the books, and this seems like a, an adjustment that allows us to accommodate large solar, if it shows interest and wants to be in Kershaw County, is that right, Mr. Conley?
Yes, sir, I mean, most, I mean, we've spoken to probably five to six over the past three or four years of prospects that are coming into the county, this is really a comfort level for them, this is nothing above and beyond anything that they don't want to encounter anywhere else, and again, if you're putting that much of an investment in there, you want to make sure your investment is protected, and this is, this is part of that.
Thank you.
Okay, Ben, Jimmy?
Thank you so much. By the way, Councilman Bozard, I thought you had some good thoughts there, it just may not have come out the way you wanted it to, but I thought you had some good concerns. Let me ask you a question, we're doing this so we can accommodate a solar business coming to Kershaw County?
A large-scale solar farm, yes, sir.
Yeah, we couldn't do that now without this regulation?
Again, yeah, you, we could, we would just put under solar generation, so what we have in our ordinances, and it's in here, you can put solar generation just in a number of our zoning districts. The solar, large-scale solar ordinances is mostly pushed to the rural areas, because those are large-scale, large parcels, and an industrial area, but most of those won't, aren't not large enough to accommodate some of these large-scale solar farms that are coming in.
So, if we didn't pass the, or if this amendment, or this change did not go through, we still could get a solar company here?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, with that, I'm ready to go to the vote, all those in favor signify on the first reading by raising your hand. I see Mr. Conell, Mr. Burns, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Sniggrass, those opposed, Mr. Two, Mr. Jones, and Mr. Bozard, the motion passes and moves to a second reading. With that, we move to the next item on the agenda, if you can help us out here, Mary, make sure we're ready, it's up on the board, it's an item we tabled last time, new business, item number one, item F on page 39, and with that, it's for the nomination of Mr. Gunter. If you recall, it was a discussion of three versus six, and I'd like that to be discussed after we get it motioned onto the table, and I give honors to Mr. Sniggrass to lead, please, because you led last time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we nominate Eric Gunter to sit on the Health Services District Board.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Second, okay, and between Mary and Ken, I ask you to explain the three versus six, and then we can move to a final discussion. Is it six or three?
It's six years, and I apologize to the clerk, there was a 1984 ordinance that was before my time, county attorney, and although I'm pretty sure I voted for it, but, but...
Before my time, too.
Yeah, but, no, it wasn't before my time, I was on county council in 1984, so...
You voted on it, I did it, huh?
It was your fault. Yeah, I was, I was, I was five years in my, on county council in 1984, but, believe it or not, but it, the ordinance was void, null and void, and later, when we codified, we did not include that, but that was a point of confusion, an old null and void ordinance that Ken DeBoz did not draft, that he probably voted for, but, out of ignorance, but, so it's a six-year term by state statute.
Mary, can I ask you to make sure the minutes reflect that Mr. Ken DeBoz was wrong and apologized in the same sentence? Further discussion, gentlemen, Mr. Sniggrass, you open, anything to say there?
Just what I said two weeks ago, you know, Eric's a fine candidate, and family, raises a family here in the community, and has a lot of interest to do a lot of good.
Okay, other discussion? Looks pretty straightforward, gentlemen, thank you very much for your patience, with that, let's move to a vote, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, and Mary is fabulous, and we all agree on that. Item number two, new business is a government-centered generator, it's on page 42 in the tablet, on tab G, and it's also on the screen, I'll leave Vic Carpenter to lead us through this.
Mr. Chairman, Members of Council, the last several weather events that we've had that have affected us with power, we've come to the realization that the generator that serves the government center is a small one, it only provides enough power to run a few of the rooms that are in this building, so when power is out, the generator kicks in and most of the building goes dark, air conditioner goes off, we're able to provide limited power to, to those that critically needed it, but the building itself was not capable of running. As we've gotten into COVID, we've realized that some of our departments that we didn't consider critical really are, for example, finance, when we're shut down for a couple days, that means that we're not processing bills, we're not paying our bills, we're not paying our employees, that's a critical function, as we found out, as businesses look to this county to, to pay the bills we owed them, so finance became very critical, the ability for people to get in and still do their jobs and do, do what they required, required the services of this building. So, we were able to, to source a generator, FEMA has committed to paying a grant for three-quarters of the cost of it, so you have before you tonight for your consideration, awarding a bid to emergency, from the Emergency Management Department for a Caterpillar C-18 generator set, for the amount of the bid, the total amount would be 231,227 dollars, of that, 75% of that would be reimbursed by FEMA, so the net cost to the county would be 57,806 dollars and 75 cents.
Good deal.
All right, with that, can we have a motion to approve?
Make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Gardner, discussion?
Quickly.
Yeah, Mr. Jones, go right ahead.
Mr. Carpenter, you got some clarification, and one thing, we've used the National Services quite a bit here lately, haven't we?
Yes, sir.
I think they do us a lot better than locally, statewide, right?
Yes, sir.
Well, I commend you for that, because I think that saves us dollars as well. Isn't it amazing that on this generator bid, how much it will cost to install it with the platforms and everything?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh...
I yield.
Uh, Mr. Conell, go ahead.
Just wondering, is it propane or natural gas?
I believe it's natural gas.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tucker?
No, I was just going to make a comment about, I know it seems expensive to install, but Blanchard Machineries got a reputation that is hard to beat, not just in South Carolina, but in the southeast, they stand behind their work, O'Callaghan.
Okay, other discussion? For your point, Mr. Tucker, I took a diesel generator out of a submarine...
What you doing on submarine?
And installed it, took it out of a submarine, and installed it in my headquarters, and boy, I'll tell you, it, it paid for itself in a number of crises. Can I ask you, it has a lag time before it kicks in, and then it has a battery source at some point that gives you a few seconds of uninterrupted power, is that how it's worked?
You have power sources at the computers themselves, so they, they provide you that uninterrupted bridge while the generator kicks in, the generator kicking is very brief, very minimal.
Excellent, perfect, that's what I wanted to know, sir, Mr. Bozard?
Who's going to do the service on it?
Sorry?
Who's going to do the service on it?
Blanchard.
Say again?
Blanchard.
Blanchard?
Blanchard.
They're going to come do the oil changes and all that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And who's gonna start it up and run it every seven days?
Well, county staff does that, we already do that to all of our, our generators, and Blanchard provides maintenance already for them. I'm sorry.
Okay. It doesn't have, it doesn't have a weekly service on it, and they gotta come by and check the oil and everything in it?
There's a, uh, service contract we had, the same thing over at the sheriff's office, they come by, they do preventive maintenance.
Okay, that's why, I just wanted to make sure we got that set up and everything, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? It looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, and we move into council briefing. Mr. Conell, we do the honors, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to express appreciation for the staff, uh, and the maintenance department, and also the administrative staff. I've had several folks in the county reach out recently about their roads, the county maintain roads and being unable to use them. You have two-lane roads that are reduced down to maybe a one-lane road because of washout on each side, and, uh, the county staff and maintenance department have just next day, sometimes same day, get out and get it done, and, and people have been satisfied overall, or it's in the process right now, getting some of their issues fixed on county maintained roads, so I'm very thankful for that, and, uh, so are the citizens of Kershaw County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say, uh, Danny, with county roads, Danny, thank you, because I tell you what it seems like, when it rains, you and I both want to go hide because the calls start coming in, but I call you on a, on a regular basis, daily, every week, about roads, and I appreciate all you do, and I know sometimes you feel like you're just stretched from here to there, but you do a great job with it, I appreciate it, especially communicating with the folks. Um, just for information, I've got in your packet, our future council, uh, the appointment that I'm gonna make, and, and I'd like it on the agenda for the next county council meeting, uh, I think that's the August the eleventh?
Yeah, August the eleventh.
Yeah, for the, uh, Clean Community Commission, I'm gonna be, uh, I've asked Jill Wolf.
Good.
It's only taken me three years to get her to accept that, but she's willing to do it now, she'll be a tremendous contribution to that, so I plan to do that at the next meeting.
Right.
And, and, uh, also, I was thinking, when I came in here and talking about it earlier, looking at the way the council is set up, you know, we, we're here sometimes for two hours, three hours, or whatever, and we're all wanting to follow the law, and I am gonna follow the law regardless of what anybody thinks of the law, even myself, which I don't like it at all. However, I'm gonna follow it. But I was thinking in here, since we're in here and we having to keep these masks on, wouldn't it be, Mr. Carpenter, if you would, unless there's objections from this council, look at maybe moving Danny and Mary down, and we could spread out, maybe we could sit down, take our mask off, do our meeting, then stand up, put our masks back on, and, and go about our business? It may not work, but could you just pull a measuring tape out and see?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks.
Are, are you done, Jimmy?
I'm done, thank you.
Yeah, good. Mr. Snodgrass, thank you.
Sure, just very briefly, want to echo what, uh, Ben and Jimmy have said about, uh, excellent work with staff on public, uh, public works standpoint. Uh, I know there's a, I'm not gonna call the address out, but I know there's an issue that Jimmy and you and I both have received calls on, that, um, uh, I know Danny and, and staff worked really hard on, on engineering a, a solution in what we thought was kind of a no-win situation, and, uh, we've had several, several rains, hard rains since, since that, and we haven't, I haven't heard much, I just want to give, echo, echo Ben and Jimmy, just, uh, they, give you guys a shout-out, and, uh, all the public works guys, and, uh, thanks, guys. That concludes my report and my remarks.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Tucker, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just want to say, uh, to all of you up here, um, thank you for the resolution on the face coverings, masks, whatever you want to call them. Um, that's you too, Mr. Jones, out of respect for your standing, don't have an issue where you voted, but I do want to make a point that, um, we need to wear them because people are looking at us as leaders, and, um, with that being said, you never know who's looking at you. So, um, not only doing it because it's, it's, it's the law, but also do it because you are a leader of this community and of this county, and that you know you have eyes on you when you think you don't have eyes on you. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Gardner?
Simply wear your mask. Thank you.
You done? Very good. Uh, the next meeting is on the eleventh of August.
Hold up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bozard, I always...
Don't you ain't doing that to me.
I always do it wrong, Mr. Bozard.
I got a short time, and I realize it, but you ain't doing it. The CTC, the, uh, County Transportation Commission, had a meeting last Tuesday, and they approved the engineering for the road at the fire department up on the lake, which means that they'll go through the engineering, see what it's gonna cost, and hopefully next month, they will vote to go ahead and pave that road. So I'm trying to get that done before I get off council, so that young man replacing me won't have to fight this battle, and I hope between me and Mr. Carpenter and some others, we're gonna get it done. Uh, Mr. Carpenter, can you give us an update on the splash pad? Have we started on it yet? We've started, uh, grade work and everything on it, haven't we?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we, work has begun, the city's managing that contract, so, so the county's not overseeing the day-to-day part of it, but I know that we've, work has begun, that they, they put the pipes in, the plumbing in, but they've still got, uh, work to do with bringing in more, more dirt or fill or something like that before they start laying out the pavement.
Okay, thank you. Now, Mr. Jones, the one that came off that commission, Clean Commission, was out of my area, and I had a man, a person lined up to come on that. Uh, I know that one that lady that you asked to come on there is in my area, but, uh...
I can clear that up for you, to show you how wrong you are, if you will let me.
But, uh, that's no problem, I will talk with the lady I had coming on, and we'll, we'll go ahead and say, Jill, so I was already wanting to do it. Uh, let me ask, uh, did, uh, Ms. Jackson call you yet? She hasn't called you? Okay, I'll talk with her then, and we'll go with Jill on that.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything further? Mr. Bozard?
I'm finished.
Thank you, I apologize again. Okay, next meeting is eleventh of August.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bozard, with all due respect, you were incorrect in what you said, but...
Yeah, we'll sort that out.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Jimmy, thank you, and Mr. Bozard. Uh, eleventh of August, next meeting, let's all watch to see how the school district behaves tonight, and, and line up to support them and how they're gonna go about, uh, putting our kids back in school. This in-person, in-school idea versus, uh, virtual is gonna be an important part of their debate, and we will watch that with great interest. Uh, I thank you, Mr. Brazel, for coming again tonight, appreciate it, and Amy, I always appreciate you being here, thank you very much. Uh, just as a signal of the time, football has already started, football practice has started at all three high schools, and they're doing it with social distancing and appropriate masks and so on. Uh, you can be very proud of your coaching staff of how they're conducting themselves and their training, breaking down into small groups instead of, uh, big groups. Uh, all three high schools, I've visited them, and I would like you all to take a time to go and thank your coaches for doing what they're doing. Those young men could be out on the watery lake or doing something on the streets of this county, and they are devoting themselves to producing winning football teams, that kind of spirit we honor and reward. With that, Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Chairman, Miss Members of Council, there's a few items for you. Uh, today, you may have recalled that DHEC had a COVID-19, uh, testing site in Camden today, they located at the health department, it was open, uh, to the public, uh, from nine AM to one o'clock PM, a hundred-and-twenty-eight people went through and had their tests done. Uh, Camden City PD was very helpful in, in controlling traffic. As you can imagine, there was a lot of people coming through in a relatively short period of time, would not surprise me if our numbers show an increase in about three to five days. Uh, also, update on the census, that's one of the things we can't afford to lose track of in the midst of everything we're dealing with, and the critical, uh, impact it'll have on this county for the next ten years. Uh, currently, Kershaw County is a sixty-two-point-five percent, still not where we need to be, but it's well ahead of the state average, um, and it's still ahead of the national average. So our job continues, but please keep pushing it to your constituents and people you come in contact with. And then just one final little thing, you know, as we deal with everything, um, on a daily basis, um, if you're up early tomorrow morning and you look in the sky, there's a comet, comet Neowise, uh, you can see it with your eyes, and it doesn't require a telescope to see this comet, and it's an amazing thing, and it's just a reminder of God's glory and how He has impact on us that's beyond our ability, and it's just a beautiful thing to see and know that, that that's out there, and it'll be sixty-five-hundred years before